Would that be item A on the business agenda?
Item A on the business agenda, yes.
Okay.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Venice.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Curtis.
Present.
Councilmember Herbert.
Here.
Councilmember Danuski.
Here.
Councilmember Sperry.
Here.
If I can get you to please stand and join the deputy mayor in flag slip. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united with liberty and justice for all. I know those senior moments very well. All right, next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. And we're going to add a topic at the beginning of the business agenda as number eight, new number eight on the moratorium. Next item on the agenda is a presentation. We're going to be losing one of our finest. Happy for him, but...
Mayor and council members, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to take this time out of your busy agenda tonight to recognize Master Police Officer Gary Zorins for his service to the city of Kenmore. Gary has been with the sheriff's office going on 37 years. He's had quite a career. He got hired in 1980 with sheriff's office. In 1986, he became a field training officer. In 1988, he was awarded the rank, we'll call it, of MPO, Master Police Officer. And then 1995, he started out, he started his SRO career with Inglemore High School and Kenmore Junior High. And then in 1998, he was awarded the King County Sheriff's Office Deputy of the Year, the same year that I selected him to come into the city. He was one of the very first people that was selected, and he loved it so much, he stuck around. So, just to kind of go through some of his accomplishments in his career, he was a Washington State access trainer. He was assisted as an end user in the development of four record management system computer programs. He was an Inglemore High School Educator of the Year. And basically, he also was a nominee for the 2017 School Resource Officer of the Year. His biggest accomplishments in the city has been his ability to mentor the junior deputies coming into the city. We've had quite a few come and go. He's been a role model. He has done nothing but worked hard and has done a great service to the city. And I appreciate all of his hard work, as well as the citizens of the city. Some of his major accomplishments that I kind of wanted to point out is that his SRO, he's been in SRO for almost 22 years of his 37-year career. That's, to me, where the biggest impact of his career has been, is being with the kids at the high school, the junior high. You know, they thought they could pull stuff over the wool, over people's eyes. They get stopped in the street for something by another deputy, Gary would show up, and they would give the other deputy a false name. Gary would show up and say, "Oh, what are you doing?" And they knew they'd been had, because Gary knew everybody. So, none of the kids could get away with anything. But his ability to be there for the kids, he taught drug and alcohol classes to the eighth graders for many years. He was at most of dances, at the football games, and at the graduation ceremonies. And he taught classes, law classes for them. So, he had quite an impact as SRO. The other impact he had was as a trainer. He trained over 100 deputies in the department in his 37 years, which is, you know, quite a feat. And now anymore, deputies, people join the sheriff's office, and they stick around for a couple of months, they decide that's not what they want to do, and they leave. But he's had this greatest impact of being successful, you know, training over 100 deputies. So, that, Mayor, I'd like to present MPO Gary Zorins to the city.
So, we have a little something for you. And I think I speak for the council when I say how much we're going to miss having you around here. You're a tremendous asset to the community, and we certainly appreciate you and everything that you've helped this community grow the way it has. So, I'm going to present this plaque to you. And I want to thank you for years of service to our community.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We're going to have to...
It's been a quick 37 years. When you look back on it, and I go, whoa, it was just, you know, the other day. My fun part of the day was always at the schools. Those kids keep you young, they're fun to be with, and what was fun was then being with them at the schools, and then I'd do a business check at Safeway after school, and they'd go, "Oh, Officer Zorins, how you doing?" Right? And then, so it's fun to have all the kids know you. And so, it's been a pleasure to work in the city. I live in the city. That was part of the thing that, why I liked here. And I was glad that I was able to serve for the length of time that I did, and appreciate it. Thank you very much.
And, of course, my wife, Becky, who, she has been studying years at the Inglemore High School, and she and I finished together. She is the one that makes who I am, because I come home to her. And then, folks, who, my mother, who actually hired to type some notes when I was in the academy for me. So, that was nice. And then, my dad, and my brother, and... Then, it's a family thing, which I appreciate that, and that the family support is something that's real big when it comes to... My last shift to work, I have ten shifts left. My last shift is Christmas. Becky goes, "Yep, that's the last Christmas," because we've worked a lot of Christmases together. All right, next item on the agenda is citizen comments. It's an opportunity for you to express your views on issues that are important to you and to the community. And we ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes, and there will be a timer up on the screen. Kirk, please call.
Todd Banks.
You do.
Okay.
It's all yours.
It's all, just let her roll, huh?
Let her roll.
Okay. It's Todd Banks, I'm president of Kenmore here. And I'm here just to, I saw on the agenda tonight, there is discussion about Lake Point. And we remain very concerned about the Lake Point project. We have heard and read that Kenmore is an important part of our community, and we're very grateful for the support of the city and the community. But we also continue to see this project continue to go along on a kind of a parallel track. And it's very unsettling for us to see this project continue to move forward when we have pretty grave concerns about the magnitude of how it impacts us. We have expressed our concerns, and will continue to do so. We'd like to understand specifically how and when our concerns will be addressed. We hear that, you know, we're important, but we don't know when we start, able to talk details and try to hear what solutions might be. It appears that the next milestone that we might be able to participate in is a parameter, the general parameter agreement that's getting discussed. I'm not sure if that's the appropriate time for us to even input on that, but we are, we really want to be able to participate in the process, and we'd like you to consider if that's the right time for us to do that. And we thank you for your consideration for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Banks.
Jim Davidson?
A lot of good things we said for you and your...
Sorry. Jim Davidson.
My name's Jim Davidson. I'm one of the owners of North Lake Marina. Mr. Mayor and City Council, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Lake Point has been on the radar for quite a while, as you all know. We think that there's some good points for us and some potentially challenging ones also. And if at all possible, we would like to also be involved, like Mr. Banks and the air harbor, in some of the underlying planning. But overall, we are looking forward to it. From our perspective, we think it'll be a very positive thing for the community and ourselves. But if there is a way that we can be involved on a committee in the planning, we'd be very happy to. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson.
Nobody else has signed up.
Who else wishing to be heard? Who else wishing to be heard in public comment?
Can I ask a question about order? Will we get to the agenda?
Public comment is now. I mean...
Actually, there's a...
There is a public comment on this, and yes, you can comment during that time.
Sir, if I can have you sign up on the public hearing, sign up.
All right. So, then, thank you for your comments. Mr. Banks and Mr. Davidson, your father was a very, very important part of this community. He was somebody that I knew and looked up to, and I've missed him since his departure. But I think this council is very concerned about our businesses, that we try to do what we can for our businesses. And I know there's going to be opportunity for input, that none of this is going to happen in a vacuum. So, thank you for being here, and thank you for your concern, and just be assured your voices are heard. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda stands approved. And now, public hearings. So, the first public hearing is on proposed tax levies for 2018. Ms. Gregory.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You'll give me a second, I'll pull up the presentation. Okay. Color is so odd compared to what I'm looking at on the screen. So, thank you for this evening, your attention to this public hearing. This first public hearing is on the 2018 revenues and taxes for purposes of setting the 2018 regular property tax levy and the 2018 special levy for the walkways and waterways bond. This RCW sets forth the public hearing process, which is to occur before property tax levies can be set. So, that is the purpose of tonight's meeting. There are actually two public hearings related to taxes and budget. This is the first of the two. This regards the revenues and the property taxes. And then, it will be followed by a public hearing on the mid-biennial budget adjustments. In two weeks, November 27th, ordinances will be presented to the council to adopt the tax levies and any budget amendments in the 2018 salary plan. So, in regard to general fund revenues, the current budget was adopted with biennial revenue estimates of $23.5 million. There's a detailed analysis of the revenues in the budget book on pages 80 to 97. When compared to the prior biennium, the budgeted revenues for this current period are about 4% greater than the prior biennium, mainly due to property taxes and charges to other funds for operating overhead. Both years of the budget included the assumption that the allowable 1% increase in the levy would be adopted. The other major revenue sources, such as sales taxes, development revenues, were assumed to be stable or experienced a slight decline due to less new construction in the city. But property taxes are by far the most significant general fund resource, accounting for 40% of the budgeted revenues. It's also the most stable resource compared to sales taxes and development. So, looking briefly at the other major revenue sources, and compared to the same period last year, retail sales tax, criminal justice, sales tax, and development revenues are all lower than they were at this point in time in 2016. Surprisingly, utility taxes are a little bit higher, but not very much. So, it's clear that these other major revenue sources are not growing. However, they are tracking closely to the budget, which was conservative and anticipated this trend. So, property taxes being 40% of our revenue budget and the city's most significant and stable resource is an important element each year when it comes time to set the levy. Even with a biennial budget, every year the council must set the levy, conduct a public hearing, and decide whether or not there will be an increase over and above the effect of new construction on the tax rolls. The increase is limited by the implicit price deflator known as the IPD, or 1%, whichever is lower, and generally, the IPD is higher than 1%. The IPD for determining the allowable increase this year is 1.5%, which means that the council can increase the levy only up to the limit of 1%. So, to calculate the levy, you would begin with looking at last year's levy of $4,677,000. 1% added to that increases it by $46,770. New construction, going on the tax rolls, adds another $109,000. And then, there are some re-levis of $2,560, resulting in a proposed 2018 level levy of This new construction figure, by the way, the $109,000, was a bit of a surprise, and it's the highest value that the city has seen in our 19-year history for new construction. So, that was pretty cool. Compared to the budgeted levy, then, this proposed levy is $95,000 higher. The budget did predict a 1% increase over last year, but only an addition of $25,000 for new construction. The city's preliminary assessed valuation increased 8.5% for 2018. So, the city's total assessed valuation is at an all-time high of $4.2 billion. The tax rate, then, resulting from this higher assessed valuation is expected to decline to about $1.14 per $1,000 of assessed valuation from $1.20 in 2017. It's important to remember, though, that all the new construction assessed valuation figures used in this presentation are based on preliminary information from the King County assessor, who continues to refine and finalize these estimates over the next month or so. They might change slightly, but they never change very much. This pie chart illustrates the various components of a Kenmore residential tax bill. You can see the relatively small proportion of the annual tax that goes to the city of Kenmore, which is roughly 13%. Also, remember, this illustration includes the excess levy for the bonds, which was .34. That's why this number is $1.54. And overall, they're not all shown here, but there are 12 separate taxing districts affecting taxpayers in the city. And we use 2017 for illustration here, because the 2018 tax rates for the other jurisdictions, of course, aren't known. But on a median-priced home in Kenmore, which is now $456,000, the estimated tax bill would have been $5,257, with 701 apportioned to the city. Every year, I update these charts for you in order to illustrate the effect that changes in assessed valuation have on the tax rate. The current regular tax rate of $1.14 for 2018, if approved, and including the 1% increase, is the lowest in the city's history. And it's interesting to see over time how the effect of the recession on the assessed values in the city, as the assessed valuations drop, the tax rate rose over the same period of time. But as the assessed valuations continue to climb, the corresponding tax levy rate declines. The bottom-left chart shows the levy, the change in levy over the last 16 years, and then on the bottom-right is the new construction that's been added each year to the tax rolls. So, the other tax levy to be considered tonight is the excess property tax levy for the walkways and waterways bond. This levy results from the voter-approved proposition that allowed the city to sell $9.2 million of bonds to finance the associated projects. The first repayments on this debt are in 2017 in the amount of $1,136,000. The levy requested for this year was $1,250,000, which translated to .34 per thousand assessed valuation for a taxpayer. In 2018, the debt service payment will be $1,221,750. And it's recommended that the levy request be the same, $1,250,000, which should result in a tax rate of about .29 per $1,000 of AV. These two annual excess levies exceed the actual annual debt service requirements by about 2.5% for each year, and this is to allow for non-collections. Unlike the regular property tax levy where the county keeps the city's whole, this doesn't happen with the excess levies. And we haven't built up our debt service reserves yet, and don't know what our collection rate will be. So, these first two years, we've been a little bit on the conservative side. Our financial advisors noted that typically, cities in King County collect about 98% of their levied taxes by the end of the year. So, if our collection rate is high, we can use excess receipts to offset future levy requests. So, this concludes the presentation for the public hearing on the 2018 revenues and property tax levies. And based on tonight's discussion and direction regarding the two levies, the city council will be presented with an ordinance in two weeks, November 27th, to set those levies for 2018. I'd be happy to answer any questions before you open the hearing for public comment. Thank you.
Questions? I have one. Can we go back to the pie chart? There you go. So, certainly, we don't get $701 per thousand of assessed valuation.
We get $1.54.
Yeah. So, then, we get 701 on an average of 456,000.
Yes, on this median-valued home.
So, what we don't know, then, what that 1.38 works out to for King County, or the 1.61 for other taxing districts, or the 4.01? We don't know what those totals are for that same home?
Yeah. Yeah, it would be the same...
It would be good if we could see that on that chart.
It would be the same $1.38 times $456.
Yeah, it'd just be good to see that dollar on the chart.
Oh, you'd like to see the dollars.
So, you could really compare them, right?
Yes, yes, okay, I understand. Could do that.
And then...
And they add up to the $11.53 that's noted at the bottom of that chart, which results in the $5,257 tax bill.
So, then, you calculate this with the 1%. Did you calculate it with 0% increase?
I did not.
Okay. Any other questions? Questions? I, then, thank you very much. Oh, Lori, I'm sorry.
Well, it's a question I'm not sure that you would have the answer to at this point. But on the new construction, the $109,000, did they, did, I guess, the county assessor, were they able to take out the ones that have the tax deferred? The new construction where they had the, I forget what we called it?
The abatement for...
Yes, thank you, yeah. Is there any chance that some of this might be included in this $109,000?
No, because the $109,000 is actually going on the tax rolls, and taxes that's abated would not be included.
Thank you.
Until that period expires.
Thank you.
Yeah, again, back on that pie chart, to see the other dollars. Because of the tax increase the state did on the property taxes, depending upon what your school district was, I mean, that's going to be a big, big hit to the North Shore School District. And so, it would really be nice if we could see what that is, because we're sure not getting it, so...
Would you like me to include that on the presentation in two weeks?
Yeah, that would be wonderful.
So, you'd like to see the dollars?
Yeah, the dollars.
Sure.
But this chart is 2017, and the impact by the state won't be felt until 2018.
Dollars in '17.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
But we can see these dollars in what it is in '17.
And then, next year, you can see...
That was my only concern, is it puts it into perspective, right? They see that we're getting $701 out of a house at 456, but it's not clear.
Soon after the start of next year, we'll be able to know what that rate is...
We will.
...that's being imposed by the state. So, we could report back to you first quarter of 2018 and do that comparison.
Yeah, because the assessor will have all the tax rates set by that time.
Yeah.
All right. So, thank you. I will declare the public hearing open on the proposed tax levies for 2018. Anybody wishing to be heard?
Nobody signed up.
Anybody wishing to be heard on the proposed tax levies for 2018? Is there anybody wishing to be heard on the proposed tax levies for 2018? Seeing no one coming forward, I declare the public hearing closed. Next item on the agenda is mid-biennial review amendments to the 2017-2018 biennial budget and salary plan for 2018. Ms. Gregory.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. One more presentation? It's not as sharp on the projection. Kelly told me, because we had to hardwire it, we don't have our high-definition projection going on. It looks kind of blurry, I apologize for that. Anyway, moving ahead, so as required by RCW, cities that budget on a biennial basis must perform a mid-biennial review and adopt an ordinance providing for any modifications to the existing budget prior to the end of the first year of the biennium. to the existing budget prior to the end of the first year of the biennium. And this process also requires a public hearing, which is being held this evening. So after a review of department and fund requests by the management team, or department and fund budgets by the management team, there are really minimal adjustments proposed, and these only impact the general fund and the surface water fund, and I will review those with you now. There are $72,000 worth of revenue adjustments to the general fund, and these were itemized in the memo in the agenda packet. So of the 72,000, 27,000 is new revenue, which is an estimate of reimbursements from the Department of Natural Resources for removal of the derelict boat that was hanging out in the Sumamish slough. There are also $41,000 of unbudgeted revenue reimbursements paid by the applicant for the environmental impact statement cost at St. Edward, for the St. Edward Lodge. And there are $45,000 of unbudgeted revenue reimbursements for code enforcement recovery from 2010. So this was an interesting recovery. I'll just mention briefly that this was a house and barn demolition and an abatement of a well that the city took care of and incurred costs of about $32,000. Those were not paid, so a notice was put on the title as an unpaid assessment, and apparently the property recently sold, so the funds will be remitted to the city with 8 percent, 8 percent interest, which is quite a good return these days. So that's an unexpected bonus from code enforcement. So that makes up the $72,000 of revenue adjustments to the general fund. On the expenditure side, we are proposing a total of $155,700 in increased expenditures. First, there's a $36,100 request from the Kenmore Waterfront Activity Center for a variety of boating, kayak, and paddle apparatus that are detailed in your packet. Training ergs, double rowing shells, dragon boat, kayaks, and paddles. There's also a request to participate in 50 percent of the estimated cost to add Kenmore to the Greater Bothell Chamber of Commerce graphics and website. So this would be about half of the estimated cost, $6,600 would be one-half, to add the name Kenmore to the chamber's name. Also on the expenditure side is $30,000, which was the cost, the approximate cost, to remove that boat, derelict boat that was in the slough, of which 90 percent is expected to be reimbursed by the Department of Natural Resources, and I mentioned a minute ago. The Lodge at St. Edward Appeal resulted in additional hearing examiner costs of about $36,000, so we're requesting another $30,000 in that line item budget. The Lodge at St. Edward environmental impact statement costs were $41,000, but these were also reimbursed by the applicant, so we are requesting for an appropriation and an offsetting revenue that I mentioned. And then $12,000 of computer software costs are requested for a mobile version of the Tracket permitting software for use in the field. And we collect a technology improvement fee through the permitting activities, and those fees more than offset the cost of this technology. So those expenses total $155,700, so the net impact to the general fund balance is a reduction of $83,700 with a remaining reserve of over $3 million. And then in the surface water management fund, we are asking for an additional appropriation of $36,000 to recognize the full cost for King County to bill, collect, and remit the Kenmore surface water fees on our behalf. I think we just missed this when we budgeted this year because we get a charge not only from the Water and Land Resources Division for calculating and putting that on the bill, but then the Treasurers Division also charges us, but they charge us by reducing our property tax remits. So when we were looking at the expenses, we missed that piece, but that's the true cost, about $64,000 over the biennium to perform that service. So are there any questions at this point, or should I continue with the presentation? I didn't know if you wanted to stop here and discuss any of these budget amendments or go on.
No, that's a good stopping point. Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Sperry.
Thanks for the report. I had a question regarding the KWAAC costs, the expenditures. I saw the memo in there with the letter and the request, and I was just wondering, had that ever come to us before? Because I didn't recall seeing it at all. I was kind of surprised when I saw that in there.
To my knowledge, that hasn't come before us before.
So what, yes, it has.
Has it?
I couldn't recall.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And so... What, a month or two ago, KWAAC came and gave a presentation to you at a council meeting, and they presented these requests at that council meeting. And my recommendation was that you provide direction on these requests during the mid-biennium budget amendment.
Okay, great.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question. I thought he meant, we meant in previous years, we had a similar request.
No, it was just these specific items. I was just wondering where that came. So is that something that, are they, and they're fully responsible for the maintenance of them and the insurance and everything? They take care of all of that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah. So one of my concerns is I wanted to make sure we had time to discuss this because we haven't had an opportunity to really talk about whether to grant their request. And so I want to make sure that after we have the public hearing that we have time to talk about this further.
Yes.
Should I continue and then you can hold your discussion when I complete?
Is that okay with you, Lori?
Yes, sorry. Okay. Okay, the next item for this presentation regards updates to the 2018 salary plan. So we are requesting a 3 percent adjustment to the salary ranges for cost of living effective January 1 to be awarded to all employees as of that date. 3 percent was the June CPIW Seattle Index that has historically been used for wages. As of today, there are already eight employees at the top of their pay ranges and four within a couple percentage points. And with no cost of living award, these employees would not receive any increase in 2018, including merit increases, until another market study indicates an adjustment to those positions. And finally, we have two personnel actions for your consideration. Having a traffic engineer on staff has been a benefit to the city by accomplishing a number of projects that otherwise would have not been completed as quickly or would have required consultant services to complete. So we are making a request to change the status of the traffic engineer from a limited four-year term to a regular position. Some of the responsibilities that the traffic engineer has taken on include addressing many of the citizen action requests that come in regarding transportation and traffic. Since June of 2016, there have been over 500 of those specific citizen requests. Also maintaining the city's database of collision history and working with the police to keep informed of collisions and trends. The database has been used to provide data for crosswalk analysis, stop control, warrant analyses, and intersection safety for grant applications and for the neighborhood transportation projects. The traffic engineer also manages on-street parking through responses to cars, the customer action requests, rechannelization projects, and overlays. He also helps ensure compliance and consistency of roadways, signage, and striping with the national and state traffic safety regulations and standards, as well as modern guidelines for urban streets. He has also partnered with the North Shore School District and other regional and local agencies and groups to address congestion, safety, and operation. So making this a regular city position will ensure that we can continue to provide a high level of customer support in the area of traffic and transportation and continue to focus on the Target Zero goal. The second request is approval of a new position known as the communications specialist. This position would be responsible for strategic direction and implementation of the city's communication initiatives, including the website, publications, and social media. Assignments might also include representing the city on inter-jurisdictional groups for regional service contracts and conducting policy or management analysis. This new classification can accomplish communication priorities as well as provide some budget efficiencies. And if approved by the city council, we could begin recruitment very soon. So based on tonight's discussion and direction, the city council will be presented with an ordinance on November 27th to adopt amendments to the 2017-18 budget, as well as the salary plan and any of the positions approved for 2018. This concludes my presentation prior to the public hearing, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time and request that council do provide direction tonight on the specific amendments to the budget, the salary plan, and the personnel actions. Thank you.
Your Honor, if I could just add one thing. The communications specialist is not a new position. It's replacing a higher-paid position. So the former public relations manager position, we're not going to fill that vacant position and instead create a communications specialist position at a lower pay rate. One of the reasons for that is we're going to have our volunteer invent supervisor Shelby. She's going to report directly to Nancy instead of reporting to the former position, so that justifies the lower pay rate.
Councilmember Smith?
Actually, the city manager just asked. I was curious how it related to that vacant position, so thank you.
Any other questions? Governor Duduski?
A question on the traffic engineer. I know we just went in with a local, interlocal with Lake Forest Park for some of his work. I just want to make sure if we keep this as a regular position, we're going to have enough work to keep him busy?
Yes, most certainly we will. Not only traffic-related issues, but this position can help out with other public works projects, including pavement maintenance and capital projects.
Thank you.
As an example of that, we're having our traffic engineer lead the way on our current pavement rating study and a plan to have all of our asphalt maintained over many years and what sections of the city to do and when, based on the condition of the pavement. So he's got the lead on that. That's an example of a project he's working on in addition to traffic safety.
I think he also makes sure that we comply with the complete streets ordinance. He's always working with development services and the capital project managers to make sure that bicycle and pedestrian safety aspects continue to be addressed as a result of that ordinance.
Yeah, and the reason I'm recommending that it turn into a regular position is because pedestrian bicycle safety is your number-one goal, of course, and I think it's going to be a top goal of yours for the foreseeable future. And so I think this position is critical for that goal to be realized and to be furthered. And also, just from a customer service standpoint, our ability to respond to citizen complaints concerning traffic safety has just improved dramatically with the bringing of this position in-house. Contracting with another government entity or a consultant would not provide the speed or the responsiveness or the attentiveness that the in-house position provides.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I wanted to declare the mid-biennial review amendments to the 2017 and 18 biennial budget and salary plan for 2018. Public hearing to be open.
Nobody signed up.
Anybody wishing to be heard on the mid-biennial review? Anybody wishing to be heard on the mid-biennial review and amendments to the 2017-18 biennial budget and the salary plan for 2018? Seeing no one coming forward, I declare the public hearing closed. Next item on the agenda is revisions of the zoning code addressing small cells amendments. Ms. Mintz? Danzerson?
Excuse me.
This is your chance to give us some direction.
I was hoping to get some direction on the budget amendments if they're...
So bring them forward, right?
Yes. Okay, okay, no changes from what we had.
Mr. Mayor, remember I wanted to discuss that one item, the KWAAC donation?
Yeah, right, right, right. Go ahead, sorry.
That's okay. We're working, we're going to get this done. So I appreciate KWAAC. I appreciated their enthusiastic request, and you can always ask, but you can always also say no. And I think there's a couple problems with setting up a precedent of giving, well, I think the language in the expenditure when it says donation to. A donation is voluntary, and we're basically making the choice for citizens to give money to the organization. And we've already support them. And so backing up, I feel like, you know, they're obviously important, they've done a great job in connecting our people to the water and having, you know, buying the land and providing the facility, and then there's an agreement. And in the agreement, it actually does say that they provide their own equipment. And so I think we should honor that agreement and honor them to participate by providing their own equipment rather than adjusting the budget to reflect this request. The one little thing that didn't seem to make it in here was, I think they called it the chase boat. Mayor, can you address that boat that...
Coach boat.
Yeah, and that one was one thing I thought might be, it didn't come into this numbers here, and I don't know what happened to it. Was it provided, did they find one somewhere else?
No, there's still, it's still one.
Okay, so that was one thing because of the agreement with the school district. I thought that might be, you know, worth considering because we're leveraging the school district agreement with them, and it's helping to provide crews.
Not certain that boat was going to be used for the school district. I thought it was going to be used for the adult program.
That's an open question, but anyway, so I just, I don't feel like this is a good precedent. And, you know, they do good stuff, and there's a good partnership. We have an agreement in place, and I would say no on that.
Everything else, I'm fine with.
So I guess when I look at sports activities in general in the city and how the city supports those, and I compare how we support baseball and soccer fields particularly, to me, it seems like anything we can do to get people to the water, get people exercising more, give them more options is a good thing. And so to me, this seems like a relatively small ask to improve their program significantly. So I'd be in favor of leaving it in, as you've proposed.
Deputy Mayor?
I'm in agreement with Councilmember Sperry that we don't supply equipment for other sports. We provide sports facilities, ball fields, that sort of thing. But I think we're setting, if we approve this, no matter what the size of the request is, it's a dangerous precedent to set. So I'm not in favor of that portion of it.
Your Honor, you have several other people.
I'm looking. Okay, Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Herbie, and Councilmember Duduski.
I appreciate the concern because it was very much where I was when I first saw this and didn't recall the specifics of it. And I think usually we look at the capital expenditures rather than personal property, basically, and that's where it kind of really makes a big leap. I do support it, and I'll support it because we're also making it such a priority. I do support it, and I'll support it because we're also making it such a priority to get people connected to the water, and we're making such a huge community investment in our waterfront facilities, so I think this is reasonable relative to the scale of everything else that we're investing there. However, I am very much aware of the fact that it is, it does diverge from kind of how we've looked at this in the past and also how it was presented initially when it came before us as a council. So I'll support it, but I do hope that this won't be an ongoing request.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yeah, if this wasn't something that was literally listed inside of our number-two council goal for the year, to advance the public's access to the water, I would probably have issues with it, but I think this is a one-time thing. We need to make that incredibly clear, that this is a one-time thing, and this is going to help them grow and get more people on the water, so I'm supportive of this budget amendment.
Councilmember Danuski?
So I support it for some of the other reasons that have been mentioned. You know, if we're considering spending $5 million renovating a ball field, I think we can spend $30,000 to forward our second council goal. The one thing I would like to see is that we don't just hand over this money and hope that they buy the boat, so that we get some kind of a, like, they show us receipts or something that they've actually purchased what they said they were going to purchase. So that would be my only request on that.
So I know I'm involved, and I'm happy to recuse myself if that's what the council wants. But I look at the way the programs have grown. I look at the dragon boat, I look at the rowing programs, and how they've grown, how they've been involving the community, and how the kids have gotten involved. I know that with the rowing program, the kids, there's 58 kids signed up the first year for this. They were totally surprised by that number. And now there are four high schools with 300 kids that want to be involved in this program. And there are other kids talking about being involved in the dragon boat program. We just had somebody here on Friday from China, looking at our facilities and looking what our plans are for squires, and talking about having an international federation race here in Kenmore, this end of the lake. So I look at what can we do to get the community water, to get the kids involved, and I just think this is a small price for that. I mean, we've put, first build that you came to me with, and that community build you wanted to do, right?
Yeah.
That was the city putting money into opportunities for kids. We've been so involved with kids and kids programs and getting a national awards for it, too. So, yeah, I certainly am supportive of this. But I will ask the council, do you want me to recuse myself?
My recommendation would be that you do recuse yourself from the vote.
Recuse myself from this vote.
For the public, you may give the reason why.
My wife is heavily involved in the dragon boat program, and so I hear about it all the time. And I warned her I was going to probably recuse myself from this vote, so. Anyway, so...
Do we need a motion?
I don't know. Do we need a motion to keep this in, or do you just want to get what? What do you want, boss?
Yeah, we'll need a motion for you on this particular item to know whether it's in or out. Can I offer one more thing, kind of dovetailing on what Councilmember Danuski said? The one part of the request that concerns me here is the canoe and kayaking program because that program hasn't, has not been as successful as dragon boating and rowing. And so you can keep that money in there, but I would have it conditional, and that doesn't have to be in your motion tonight, but because when we, we're going to come back to you with an agreement on how to do this, probably, you know, after the first of the year. But in that agreement, I think you should be, it should be conditional, especially on the canoe and kayaking portion. You don't want to give a bunch of, supply a bunch of canoes and kayaks to a non-existent program that's been floundering for the last couple of years. Maybe you make it conditional on certain milestones being met, including the hiring of a good, quality coach. Something like this could entice a coach to come, where you're saying, hey, look, we want you to come and coach our program, and if you do, we will have this equipment to help you grow your program. But that's my one reservation with this, is the canoe and kayak portion, and how, what you, any kayaks or canoes you help purchase, they need to be conditional based on certain milestones that show a successful program.
I agree with that completely. Councilmember Curtis?
I'd like to make a motion that we include the funds for the waterfront programs with details to be worked out and presented to the council later.
All right, motion in front of us. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
No.
Deputy Mayor Vannis?
No.
Mayor Baker? Oh, excuse me, you're accusing yourself. Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Board two.
All right, now, public hearing.
Thank you.
On revisions to the zoning code addressing small cells amendments. Ms. Mintz?
So before you open the public hearing, I'll ask Laurie to just give a brief context for this hearing.
Good evening. This will be very brief. As you recall, in 2016, you passed wireless communication facilities amendments. We then had a request this year that we relook at the issue of small cells and the size of them and where they should be located. The ordinance before you tonight includes a direction you had provided at your last meeting, which is to say that we are changing the definition of small cells to match that in the state law. However, there would be a limitation of three small cells on a utility or light pole or a building or a roof. And then if you wanted to exceed the three small cells, you would go back and fall into the conditional use permit process involving public notice. So that is the bulk of what is before you tonight. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions? All right, I'll declare the public hearing open for revisions of the zoning code addressing small cells amendments.
Kim Allen?
Good evening, Mayor Baker. Kim Allen for the Wireless Policy Group on behalf of Verizon this evening, 113 Cherry Street, Seattle, Washington, 98124. Thank you, I'm here to just say thank you to staff and thank you to you for directing a course correction in the language for the definition of small cells that was an absolute impediment to us deploying this valuable technology in the city of Kenmore. With the corrections that are being proposed by staff, we absolutely can deploy. We've got our applications ready to go, and we will be bringing this technology to the residents and businesses and visitors of the city of Kenmore. So again, thank you so very much. We support the ordinance 100 percent and hope that you pass it this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Allen, when do you expect this to be brought to us?
What was that, Mayor Baker?
When do you expect this technology to be...
It's here. It's ready to go.
installed in Kenmore.
We have applications teed up, ready to go. We have a, the first group of small cells that we have done a pre-up on with staff, and so we are, we're ready to go.
There's nobody else signed up.
Anybody else wishing to be heard on revisions of zoning code addressing small cells? Anybody else wishing to be heard? Seeing no one coming forward, I declare the public hearing closed for the revisions of zoning code addressing small cells. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 17-0445, amending the KMC sections related to billboard regulations. Mr. Hampson?
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Thank you. This public hearing is to discuss amending the billboard regulations that we currently have in place. The current code is previously, it looks like it's been a code that's been carried over from King County, just looking at the language in it and some of the dates, and so this will be updating the code to Kenmore's standards. It also allows alterations and relocations of billboards, and it limits the number of billboards to the number that were in place when the city incorporated in 1998. Currently, we have 10 billboards, and I'll explain that a little bit more in a little bit. But the proposed code, it would categorize billboards as a prohibited and non-conforming sign, and it wouldn't allow billboards to be enlarged, relocated, or replaced. And the proposed code ordinance has language in it that if the billboard becomes structurally damaged and unsafe, then it will have to be removed. As I mentioned, we have 10 billboards in the city, nine of which are near State Route 522. One of them is a little further away, and the reason I mention that is because the State Route 522 is a state highway which the Scenic Vista Act falls into place. And so if we wanted to remove those nine buildings, we wouldn't be able to do it through amortization without a compensation. And so nine of the 10 buildings or billboards wouldn't be eligible for that because of the Scenic Vista Act. But one of them that's located on the south side of the river is eligible for the amortization, and we're recommending a 10-year amortization period for that. That's really the nuts and bolts about the public hearing.
Any questions? Councilmember Curtis?
Could you explain the state Scenic Vista's Act? I don't really understand what it's protecting.
Well, I might have to ask our city attorney, Rod Kasseguma, to try to explain it a little bit better than I can. You want to take a first stab at it?
Since I didn't work on this, I'll try my best.
Okay.
I think the important thing for me to say relating to this proposed ordinance is that the Washington Scenic Vista's Act has a distance away from a state highway where if the sign or billboard is located within that area, I think is...
660 feet.
Then the billboard cannot be required removed by local jurisdiction without paying compensation for the fair market value of the sign, which is why Mr. Hampson said that there's one sign out of that 600-foot diameter area which we can require to be amortized over 10 years and then removed at that time.
Councilmember Herbig?
So the scenic vista that's being protected by the Washington State Scenic Vista Act is billboards? Okay.
Yes, it protects billboards.
Just wanted to make sure I was hearing all that right because it sounded a little funny.
It's counterintuitive, but it regulates the billboards, but then says that local jurisdictions cannot require them to be taken down without compensation.
Councilmember Danuski?
When you say that they can't be altered, does that mean that the content can't be altered?
No, this is the structure, the frame, the components of the billboard, but not actually advertisement sign area.
Okay, and then did we look at what the compensation would be if we were to take that route?
We didn't. It's very complex for many different reasons, and we could discuss that more if you would like to. It may be something for a different topic.
Yeah, that could be a different conversation.
Could you, I didn't hear the question.
Let me repeat the question.
The question I had was if we looked into how much it would cost to provide compensation to take down the other nine.
Yeah, Councilmember Smith?
Well, that was actually a question I had, too. So is, do you, I mean, do we know, is that, is fair market value just, is it just like coming up with a present value based on like a discounted cash flow, or how, do you have any idea? When they say fair market value, I don't know what that means for a billboard. Do you know it all, or do you have any idea what that is?
I'll let Rod take a stab at this.
I can offer a comment. When we were looking at this billboard ordinance, meeting Mr. Hampson and myself and Rosemary Larson in my office, we, Brian primarily, attempted to find out from other jurisdictions which had attempted to regulate billboards to see if any of them had developed an amortization schedule or had determined how much a fair market value of a billboard was. There was one city which was sued and which, the lawsuit resulted in a case that many of us looked to, to determine how much we may have to pay for a billboard, and that city decided rather than pay for the billboards, it would then, it would instead repeal its law. So we were unable to find any good examples from other jurisdictions of what a fair market value might be, and as you can probably guess, the billboard industry was not willing to help us determine what the compensation amount might be.
My thought would be you'd take an income-based approach, and Councilmember Smith, I'm sure you're very familiar with this, but like, for example, there was one large billboard here on Bothell Way that we wanted to put an advertisement for Target Zero, and they wanted to charge us $10,000 for it to be up for two weeks. So we politely declined because of the cost, but think about that, $10,000 for every two weeks, multiply that annually, and then you could come up with a basis for what the sign would be worth from an income-based approach. So in other words, pretty expensive.
Right, thank you. And the reason I asked the question partly was to understand what it would cost to get there, but also to understand that maybe there's also a reasonable approach that rather than looking at it from an adversarial perspective, you know, you've got a seller that maybe would consider, for the right price, removing a billboard. And so that's the only reason I asked, is trying to figure out, but if $10,000 is the cost for two weeks, I can pretty much be assured I probably wouldn't be in favor of whatever that result is.
Another thought is to acquire the land that the billboard sits on and then just not renew the lease when it comes due again.
That's true.
That might be a less expensive route, or a portion of the land that the billboard sits on.
Yeah, that was just, if there is a way to look at it where maybe it's looked at as a long-term approach of trying to address it. I know that if I recall in the data, looking at the package, I think one owner owned, I think all, or nearly all of the billboards.
Deputy Mayor?
As I recall, we used to have billboards on the interstate freeways, and I don't know who, what, whether it was the state or the feds that eliminated them from the freeways, but we don't have billboards on the interstates anymore. And I don't know how they managed to do that, but somehow they all disappeared.
Any other questions? All right, I declare the public hearing open for ordinance number 17-0445, amending the Kenmore Municipal Code sections related to billboard regulations. Clerk, please call the first person.
David Evans.
Hi, counsel. It's good to see you guys again. Last time, I think, was the For the Love of Kenmore event. My name is Dr. David Evans. I've been the president of the Board of Directors for Kenmore Community Club. I'm entering into my fourth year here. We have a situation that we are in a contract currently with Clear Channel for a billboard. It's a lease contract. Trust me, the amount of money that Clear Channel makes is not the amount of money that the property makes in leasing the billboard structure, not nearly that much. In our case, we have an ambition, though, that ours is a billboard with an advertisement only on one side, and I think that the back of a billboard, if we don't like billboards, we certainly don't like the back of a billboard when there's no signage on it whatsoever. We, in looking at the statue, notice that the definition of a billboard... We, in looking at the statue, notice that the definition of a billboard in the recitals is that it's advertising an activity unrelated to the property on which it stands. If, of course, it's advertising the property on which it stands, then it's just a sign. So what I wanted to just venture an opinion about, and I appreciate the chance to do that, is that the language in the proposal doesn't give an option to bring the billboard into conformity. And that, of course, one way to do that would be to repurpose it to advertise the property on which it stands. And also, I think one of these items about shall not be relocated or moved to another location should add within the city, because it would seem that a property should be able to voluntarily remove, at least, the billboard. So I think that that's what I wanted to bring up. We're actually really happy that this issue came up, because it gives a chance to sort of talk about this particular what-if, which is the what-if of could the structure be repurposed to advertise the property in which it's located, subject, of course, to any other municipal code that would regulate signage in the town. So that was the opinion I wanted to give. We also, I, you know, I'm happy to share aspects of our agreement with Clear Channel, if that would give you an idea. And I think in the amortization issues, we're saying that we should be clear, are we, would the city be compensating the property who is gaining a little bit of rental income from leasing the part of the property on which the billboard stands, that's what's happening in our case, versus compensating Clear Channel or another giant advertising? And I think that the spirit of it, all the considerations would be to compensate the property here in Kenmore, which would be losing that rental income if we're no longer able to rent to the Clear Channel. So thank you for listening to those opinions.
All right. Anybody else?
Nobody else.
Anybody else wishing to be heard in ordinance number seventeen dash zero four four five amending Kenmore Municipal Code sections related to billboard regulations? Yes, Mr. Davidson. And if you'll please sign up after your, after your finish.
Thank you. I'm Jim Davidson. One thing that I didn't hear, and it's probably in the details, I believe the ordinance says that if a billboard is damaged, that it would be removed. And I wasn't sure if that, if there was the option for the billboard owner to repair. And if so, is there a limit on what's a minor repair versus a major repair and replacement? And whether they could remove it but replace it with another billboard structure? Just in what I heard in the presentation, which I know is a summary, that detail wasn't in there, but I could see that coming up down the road as a possibility. Thank you very much.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Anybody else wishing to be heard in ordinance number seventeen dash zero four four five amending Kenmore Municipal Code sections related to billboard regulations? Seeing no one coming forward, I declare the hearing closed. Mr. Smith, you had a question?
Yeah. And this is what I appreciate about having people come and speak at a public hearing like this. And it gets to a couple of the comments that were just made. But if, you know, if there was a way to, to talk to the property owners who are leasing the billboards out, maybe there is a reasonable amount that could be negotiated in order to either forego the use of it and eliminate the billboard, or to significantly diminish or alter the size of it to make it much more in scale with the surrounding signs, and that it could be kind of a win-win. And I didn't originally look at this item, this ordinance, in that context, but after thinking about it and hearing this, it does seem like that's a reasonable thing, especially because I, you know, I frankly find them not very attractive. And if there's a way to bring them down into scale, not even fully eliminate it, then maybe that's a reasonable approach that could be done jointly with the city in some capacity.
You will have a perfect opportunity to speak about this, because it'll be coming up again. Third item on the business agenda.
I was going to add to that, but if you'd rather that I wait until the business-
I think that's more appropriate, place in the public hearing.
Okay.
All right. Next item then on the agenda is the moratorium. City Attorney, do you have anything further on that for us? They're being passed out now. Wonderful. So this item is on ordinance number seventeen dash zero four five three, an ordinance of the city of Kenmore, Washington, adopting a moratorium on development permits relating to mobile home parks, setting a date for a public hearing on the moratorium, providing severability, and declaring an emergency. So the chair would entertain a motion on ordinance number seventeen dash zero four five three, adopting a moratorium on development permits relating to mobile home parks, setting a date for a public hearing on the moratorium and providing for severability, declare, and declaring an emergency. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Deputy Mayor?
Just procedural thing, but the city clerk is not Patty Safran anymore.
That's a title, and you can certainly correct that. Councilmember Curtis?
I would just comment on the moratorium itself. Our planning commission is working on this project as directed by the city council. As we speak, they've already had some meetings, and we just want them to finish their work presented to the council, and let us make some decisions before we change anything without that direction. That's why I think this is important.
Councilmember Smith, without a hand going up?
Yes. I actually, I understand why it's in front of us, and I understand why there's probably a fair amount of support for it. I will not support it. I think the planning commission works on it numerous issues that deal with zoning and ordinances that affect all our citizens and property owners. And we don't go about enacting moratoriums on those when they're working on them. And I do not see this as an emergency, and I do not see it as something that rises to that level, so I won't be supporting it.
So just a little clarification for the people in the audience. This is a moratorium on, on mobile home parks to take a step back and look at possibilities and preserving them as affordable housing at this point until the planning commission has worked through this issue and come to the council with a recommendation. Is that an accurate description? Councilmember Herbig?
As somebody who usually is a big fan of open and transparent government, I would normally have an issue with us bringing something forward with no public notice. And I just want to clarify for the public, the reason why I'll be supporting this is because the work that the planning commission is doing to figure out how to protect and grow our affordable housing is important. And if we were to tell people, hey, in ten days, we're going to be doing a moratorium on development for mobile home parks, the developers could then sweep in in those ten days and vest under our current zoning, and we would, we wouldn't be able to really possibly get the result we want or allow the planning commission to kind of finish their deliberations. So that's why I'm going to be supporting this six-month moratorium at this time, and why this is kind of unusual right now.
All right. Any other questions? City Attorney?
Mayor Baker, I should add for the public's benefit that in section three, the city council is scheduling a public hearing on this moratorium ordinance for November twenty-seventh, at seven o'clock P.M. So that's an opportunity for anyone who has any thoughts and comments about this ordinance to come to the city council and make those views and comments known.
All right. So there's a motion and a second. And the motion is in favor of adopting ordinance number seventeen dash zero four five three. There's no further discussion. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Herbig?
Was that me? Sorry.
Yes, Herbig, yes. Deputy Mayor Venice?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sperry?
No.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Five-two.
All right. Motion passes.
Okay. And you're turning the meeting over to me. And our mayor has to catch a plane back to Charlotte, North Carolina for the National League of Cities meeting. So he's turned the gavel over to me. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number one seven zero four four six, amending the Kenmore Municipal Code, section eighteen.
Four-five?
Huh?
You said zero four four six, it said zero four four five.
Four-four-six, the first one.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Sections eighteen dot twenty dot twenty-seven sixty-five and eighteen dot six-zero dot oh-five-oh for small cell wireless communication facilities within the city. Debbie Bent, Community Development Director, and Lori Anderson, Senior Planner.
I have nothing further to add, other than what we said prior to the public hearing. So we would recommend that council pass the ordinance before you.
Do I hear a motion to pass?
So moved.
So a second?
Second.
It moved and seconded. That we approve ordinance seventeen dash zero four four six, amending the Kenmore Municipal Code for small cell wireless communication facilities in the city. Will the clerk please, is there any discussion first? Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sperry?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Venice?
Yes.
Passed. Thank you.
Ordinance passes six to zero unanimously. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number seventeen dash oh four four five, amending Kenmore Municipal Code sections eighteen dot four-two dot oh four oh, eighteen dot four-two dot one-five-oh, and eighteen dot one-zero-zero dot zero-two-zero, repealing Kenmore Municipal Code sections, I have to read them all, eighteen dot four-two dot one-six-oh, eighteen dot four-two dot one-seven-oh, eighteen dot four-two dot one-eight-oh, and eighteen dot four-two dot one-nine-oh, and eighteen dot four-two dot two-zero-zero relating to billboard regulations. Brian Hampson, Development Services Director.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and Council. This is regarding the public hearing we just had on the ordinances to amend the billboard regulations. And if there's any questions or you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer.
Councilmember Sperry?
Thank you. I will admit, I'm a bit confused on this bill and what exactly it would be doing. So the first question I have is for those billboards that are in the scenic vista, if I read this, is it that those billboards can't be altered or changed, but they don't, there's no attempt to amortize them or say you can't have them after a few years?
That's correct. The billboards within the Scenic Vista Act aren't eligible to be amortized out without a compensation. And alterations, you couldn't alter them, expand them, make them bigger, relocate them, but you could repair them. The code actually is requiring you to keep them repaired. And so if there's a component or structural element of it, you have to replace it. If you don't, then that's when you'd have to take it down. And because they have the ability to repair them, that's different than requiring them to take them down without any compensation, because you're taking it down because it's a safety concern.
So then the incentive, obviously, would be to keep things repaired?
Right.
Okay. So is it just the one that is outside this vista act that could be amortized or could be asked to not have it, but basically there'd have to be compensation?
No, the one that's outside the Scenic Vista Act, the amortization, could be the compensation. So there wouldn't be any additional compensation after the ten-year amortization period. That is considered the time period.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That actually helps a lot. I appreciate the clarification.
Councilmember Curtis?
So what are the major changes between the present King County law and what we have? It sounds like part of it is they can't expand or change.
So currently, we have ten billboards in our city. And currently, somebody could take down a billboard and put another billboard up in the city if it met all the other criterias that are outlined in the code. There's distances between each one and stuff like that. And so they could do that. They could also take down a billboard on the site and rebuild it bigger than what they currently do, staying within the parameters of our current code.
So we're limiting expansion in number, and we're limiting expansion in size of present?
Yeah, we're eliminating any expansion altogether, any alterations, and any new or replaced billboards wouldn't be allowed.
All right. Then I had one more question related to if it's damaged. So they do have the, let's say there's a windstorm and part of it breaks over, and they have the opportunity to repair it. It isn't automatically taken down just because it's been damaged. They do have a period of, to restore it? That was a little unclear to me.
So if there's a windstorm and it blows over the billboard, I would need to figure out how that would be implemented. The repair is, the structural repair is, let's say that there's a rotten or rusty beam that needed to be taken out and replaced. And so that's what the repair is. And but I am not sure that the code talks about, let's say it blows over, falls down on its own, act of mother nature or not, or somebody runs into it with their car and knocks it over?
So those are the two scenarios I was thinking of. To me, it seems like we haven't addressed that. There's a difference in my mind between disrepair, where we'd have the right to be asked that it be taken down, and an accident happens to it. A truck runs into it.
I know Rod didn't work on this, so he's probably not familiar. He's got his hand up. He might save me.
I can answer this question. I'm looking at subsection A of section, new section eighteen forty-two one fifty, which is on page two of your ordinance. And the section that relates to the question is subsection six. This subsection says that if the structural components of the billboard become unsafe, then the billboard must be removed within thirty days. It does not address the situation where a billboard needs repair, such as one of the boards may have fallen off in the storm. It does not address that, which means that therefore it's not authorized, the repairs are not authorized under this current version.
So it seems like we should address it one way or another. It should be included.
Well, it sounds like if it fell over due to a windstorm, the repair would not be authorized.
Right. But the key words are unsafe structure. If it's safe but in need of repair, then it's not an unsafe structure, and the subsection six doesn't require it to be removed. But this doesn't address the situation where there is a minor repair necessary or which could be done.
Yeah, I guess I'm thinking major, something major happened, like it blows over or a truck runs into it and the whole thing crumples sideways. As much as I hate big billboards, is that the right way to manage with the, to me, the unclarity that's in this law, that major of a situation? I think we should state it- I think we should state it one way or another. Either we will or won't allow those to be rebuilt in those major accident situations.
Councilmember Herbig?
I want to say, generally speaking, I like the direction that we're going with this. I'm not a huge fan of billboards. I think they're kind of a blight on our landscape and a distraction to drivers. And I think they kind of add to the pass-through feeling of both ways quite a bit to have those billboards on the side. And I think they're not particularly classy. That said, what we're doing here doesn't really, has some effects to the billboards that are within the scenic view area, but doesn't, at the end of the day, doesn't really get us to a place where we don't have billboards long-term. I'm supportive of what we have here. I would just like to continue having a conversation down the road with how we address billboards on five twenty-two, working with property owners, working with other stakeholders, because I think in the long-term, getting those billboard down, getting those billboards down will be a net benefit to all of Kenmore. So I'd like us to continue having that discussion after we either pass this or a version of this, because this isn't going quite as far as I think we should be going long-term.
Does the ordinance address the compensation for the landowners who are receiving rent from the billboard company?
Does this current ordinance address compensation to the landowners?
If the billboard was removed, for whatever reason, or amortized out of existence.
No, this doesn't address any compensation to any landowners or companies. The only way that somebody would get compensated for that one billboard that's out of the scenic vista act is being able to be amortized over the ten-year period. And so that's a form of compensation, and a appropriate compensation for signs and billboards, just not within the scenic vista act.
Councilmember Smith?
I have a comment, but also I know the city manager had something to say prior when this was discussed. After my comments, I'd be curious to know what your thoughts were.
Yeah, Councilmember Smith, you were talking about working with the landlord in a way that could be, might maybe of mutual benefit or something. The only thing I wanted to point out is, nothing in this ordinance or what you're considering tonight would preclude us from doing that on a parallel track. In fact, what we're talking about tonight could even give us, put us in a better bargaining position.
So what about then, and I appreciate your comments on that, like number three, A three, on the second page of the ordinance, where it says, I mean, it's just one sentence that says, "A non-conforming billboard shall not be replaced with another billboard." Well, maybe another billboard could have benefits that maybe it's smaller and maybe it's, it serves a little bit of a different function for the property owner than they couldn't appreciate before. And that line right there would eliminate that ability. It's kind of an all or nothing thing.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I guess, I would like us to have some flexibility, and I would like you to be able to have flexibility in how we can approach, because the way this is written, we're basically, these billboards are going to be there in perpetuity. I mean, there's nothing to ever say they would ever go away then, other than that one that can be amortized out. And it would be nice if there's some flexibility for creativity here.
So, I'm not clear what the council wants to do. Is there a motion to pass this ordinance, or do we want to table it and ask the staff to go back to the drawing board and address the concerns that we've brought up here tonight? Councilmember Sperry?
My feeling is it does need a little bit more going through. I think the questions that have been brought up here have been good. I don't know if there's a particular deadline. This is just code cleanup, right? This isn't comprehensive plan amendments or anything, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Hampson, what, do you understand what our concerns are?
I think I do.
Okay. I'm not sure I do, but, so don't ask me to recite them, but.
So it sounds like we want a little bit more flexibility on the replacement, if that's being allowed, and also to have the discussions with the property owners beforehand.
I'd also like some clarification in case of major accident, either storm or vehicle, that it's prohibited or not, but it's clarified in there, not just kind of a vague thing.
Okay.
Yeah, in the event of irreparable damage, for whatever reason. Okay, so, Councilmember Herbig?
So, Brian, if we had, we have other structures that maybe are non-conforming, but exist in the current zone, and what would we do with them? If there's a building, so it's not a sign, it's a building, and something happens, a tree falls on it, it's non-conforming, you know, it's an old building from when King County was in charge of zoning out here, what do we do with that? Do we let somebody repair that building, or do we have them start over? I mean.
We do. We let them repair the building. If it's an act of God that damages the building, we let them repair it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, can you come back to us with revision of this in the future, probably sometime in January, I imagine?
Yeah, I might, I'll talk to our city manager, Rob, and see how he wants to present this to you, but it might need another discussion before we bring back an ordinance. We could discuss that later.
Okay, fine. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is a review and discussion of resolution number seventeen dash three zero three, adopting updated purchasing policies and procedures. Janet Quinn, Management Analyst. And Joanne Gregory?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, Council.
Joanne Gregory.
I regret that I do not have a Hank Heron on my presentation. I apologize for that. So I just wanted to briefly take you through, you have the agenda bill that shows what the major changes are, and I'll just take, walk you through them and answer any questions if you have any. But I'll just throw in the caveat that I don't actually do purchasing, so this has been a group project, and it has been, much input from many people has gone into it, so. So this would just, for technicalities, it would repeal resolutions that you've passed previously. The one that you just passed, seventeen three oh two, establishing a federal procurement policy, that is actually absorbed into this policy and becomes a portion of it, section five in this policy. So that's what happens to those if this works for you. We've added a mission statement and goals in it, and you can read it as well as I can, but really the filter for purchasing is still to make sure that it is sound practices, that there's flexibility under the law, but there's also accountability to taxpayers. As I said, the mission and goals were added. The second of the biggest changes, authority is given to the city manager to make necessary changes. This is both a policy and procedure. We discussed it, rather than having two separate documents for employees to refer to, we felt like it would be more efficient and more appropriate for staff to be able to look at one document and figure out what they needed to do to make purchases. So because of that, we are, we put in a clause that is in section one. It just gives the city manager the authority to make changes, to modify the policy as necessary for the effective and efficient conduct of city business, except in matters of increased purchasing limits or authority, which are established in this. And then any changes that are made would come to you, so that you wouldn't, it wouldn't just be changed and you would have no knowledge of it. Third, it clarifies when Washington State sales tax needs to be factored into cost estimates in the RCW. And Rod, feel free to jump in, because you and I haven't had a chance to chat about this one, but in the definition on the, in the RCW for supplies and for public works, it is, it says, "The cost of materials, equipment, supplies, and labor." So just for, so that would mean purchasing authority up to whatever limit, so fifty thousand for Rob, or, it impacts the type of process that staff uses and the authority. So it would be just, for public works, it would be just the, those values without the Washington State sales tax factored in. It's a little bit easier to figure out, because sometimes sales tax isn't applied within that contract, and sometimes it is. So this is just, then there's often question from staff members on whether or not it's supposed to be included when they figure out the contract price. So this clarifies that. And then number four, purchases of supplies, materials, and equipment not related to public works, the dollar limits remain the same, but it allows the department directors and the city manager to designate authority, and it also allows a direct purchase option for up to ten thousand dollars. Any questions so far, or shall I keep going? Keep going?
Any questions at this point? Okay, please continue.
Okay, thank you. So, public works, this is a little bit messy, but the current is up in the upper right-hand corner. The chart gives you both the approval authority and the process within the same table, which is a little bit complicated, because there are different processes that apply. So we've broken them out and just taken the approval authority in one table and then processed separately. And one of the directions that I got from the city manager was to build in a little bit of flexibility. Our current policy is more restrictive than the law, so it doesn't allow us to make some of the purchases that the law allows. And this adds a little bit of flexibility that we don't have right now. So on-call and ongoing contracts are not addressed in our current policy. They're also not clearly addressed in the law. And I don't know, Rod, do you want to speak to this, or shall I just continue?
Just continue.
Okay. So the discussion has been that if we put it into the policy, and I use the guidance from MRSC to put this in, that it, you're authorizing this because you're the authorizing body. So absent this in the policy, it doesn't allow for this. Change orders is fairly significant change. It mirrors very much what you approved for West A, for the five twenty-two West A project, and it just puts it in place that that would be acceptable for any contract value. The theory behind this is that there's a time delay in coming to council for change orders, for one, but also, secondly, it's already in the contract that they present to you, so there, when the staff comes to you to give, to ask for your approval on a contract, they're building in the contingency amount, so you've already authorized them to expend that, and this would allow them to expend those funds that you've already approved. Kind of, does that make sense? And you can see under the table that we're requiring that all contract approval requests include that contingency. As I mentioned, the federal policy, which you've already seen, we made the changes that we talked about at the last, at that meeting's approval. And then courtesy of Rod, we also removed of Kenmore and made it a little bit more For architecture and engineering and other professional services, we added the cooperative purchasing option to that section. It's treated a little bit differently in the law, so it doesn't say exactly the same thing that the public works section says. But the only, what you see before you, I think I didn't add slash designate to the approval authority fields to those two, and that was unintentional. So I would request to add those back in. And that's kind of an overview. You saw there were fairly significant changes, and you saw the redline copy and the copy that is the cleaner, easier-to-read copy. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to.
Any questions?
Try to answer them.
No further questions? You don't need any action from us tonight? This is coming back on the twenty-seventh, right?
Correct. If you like it as it is, then we'll bring it back for a consent agenda approval on the twenty-seventh. Does that sound acceptable?
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Walkways and waterways, park projects, update. Maureen Colazie? Colazie? Is that how we pronounce it? Yeah, close. Okay. Ann Stanton and Debbie Bent, Community Development.
Good evening, Council. So there's no action request in this item. This is just an update on the status of the three parks projects under the walkways and waterways bond measure. So for the Rhododendron Park waterfront improvements, that was the project which was adding the boardwalk, I think we're calling it the waterwalk, actually. Thank you to Lori Sperry, I think was suggested that. So that connects Rhododendron Park right down to the waterfront, and that project is substantially complete. So I think that's an early win on the walkways and waterways project. And as part of that project, the float, the new float at Rhododendron and the replacement float at Squires were added to that construction contract. It's separate money from the bond, but it's part of the overall construction contract, and that work on the in-water work begins next week. So that's exciting. So by the end of this year, the boardwalk will be complete and the two floats will be installed. And I'd like to thank Ann Stanton, who isn't here this evening, for her project management on keeping those projects on track. And I see Rob waving, so I think he wants to add something.
Well, I just couldn't wait to go walk on the waterwalk at Rhododendron Park. I don't know if you've gotten a chance. It's open to the public, and yeah, it's just a really neat experience, and it connects the playfields to the water, which we wanted to do. Debbie said it's substantially complete, and that's true. They still have additional restoration work to do in the wetland itself. So when you're on the waterwalk or the grid walk that you're, that goes over the wetland, it looks pretty boggy and swampy there still. The contractor is required to come in and plant natives and get that wetland looking good again. So that's still work yet to come.
Yes. So that completes the update on Rhododendron, so I think that's exciting, and I think we need to celebrate that success. And probably, not at this time of the year, I think probably more appropriately in the spring, when the weather's nicer, we'll have more of a formal ribbon-cutting event or something then. So on the log boom waterfront improvements and the Squires Landing waterfront improvements, Maureen is the project manager for those two projects, and they're right now on a parallel path. We have a consultant team on board who are working on the conceptual design that was presented to the public. We've had a meeting with the agencies, the tribe, the Corps, Fish and Wildlife, to ask them for some early input on questions and concerns, and we're currently in the process of responding to those questions and comments. And after that, we will then be kind of refining the design and refining the costs of the project, and we'll then likely be bringing those forward to council early next year. And following that presentation to council, we'll then be having another opportunity presenting these to the public to let them know where we are in terms of the concepts and the costs. And then following that, moving forward with permitting. So that's where we are. We just wanted to kind of let you know that things are progressing on those two projects. There's a lot of work behind the scenes, and we wanted to just kind of let you know that work is progressing currently. And we're on task, on topic, and we'll be back before you early next year. So if you have any questions on any one of the three projects, we're happy to answer them.
Well, and Debbie might. Well, and Debbie might be making it sound easier than it really is. Both Debbie and Maureen have been working with the permitting agencies, which are many, and they're pushing back in certain areas, as you may have suspected they would. And working with them and negotiating with them and still getting, still delivering on what we told the citizens we would provide is the big challenge. So we may have to make some modifications to the design to, to satisfy the permitting agencies, but our goal is still to maintain the overall spirit of what our citizens approved.
Councilmember Curtis?
I'd just like to comment that, given that we just passed this last year, or the citizens passed it, I feel really good about the, the initiative that we're taking as a city to get things moving and show the citizens that we're using their money well.
Any other questions, comments? I had a question about the Rodeo Dendron Park. The boardwalk, or the walkway, may be completed, but the fences are still up, I think.
Right.
And that's the, that's the northbound access to the boat ramp, too. When is that scheduled to be completed?
It's probably in the next few weeks. I did say it's substantially complete, so you can get on the, on the, there is still some things that the contractor is required to do, so it will be over the next few weeks. And like I say, they also have to do the in-water work for the float as well. So that's another reason why the fencing is still up, because there's still some work to do on the float, on the dock.
Well, thank you. And you, you said you'd wait until spring for ribbon cutting?
Well, I think, given the current weather, it's probably-
Yeah, right. But still, you know, we need to toot our horns, that hey, this, we passed this last November, and this is, this is a record. Government doesn't move this fast usually. And it's, it's really neat that we've made the progress on this.
Well, I think it, it's, the other thing is that we were sort of ready. We already had the permits in hand. So if we hadn't had the permits in hand, it would have been slower. We already had the permits in hand, ready to go. That's why we were able to move so quickly on that particular project.
But some publicity on this in the newsletter, or whatever.
Oh, for sure.
It doesn't have to be ribbon cutting, but just let the public know.
Absolutely.
Because with the fences up, they think they're still working on it.
Yeah. So I think once the float's complete, then we can, you know, we've been taking some pictures along the way, so we'll absolutely want to get some good press out there on completion of that project.
Okay. Were you going to give us some, I mean, we went through Rodeo Dendron and Log Boom, but did you go through the Squires Landing?
The Log Boom and Squires are on the same kind of parallel path right now. So in terms of where they are in the process, we're working on, on the design, we're responding to agency comments. So we're on the same path for both projects.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Curtis?
I would just comment that some skunk cabbage would look really great along there, with its big, huge leaves and great flowers.
You like the skunk cabbage? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. You don't need any action from us on this tonight? No, okay.
We will be providing an update on the transportation portion of walkways and waterways in two weeks.
Okay, looking forward to that. Thank you. The last item on the business agenda. No.
Second to last.
Comprehensive plan amendments related to school impact fees. Ms. Debbie Bent, Community Development Director, and Laurie Anderson, Senior Planner.
So we're here tonight to present the Planning Commission's recommendations on the comprehensive plan amendments related to school impact fees. And the North Shore School District asked the city to consider collecting school impact fees, and right now, the comprehensive plan would not allow that. So there are some minor changes to the comprehensive plan, to set the table, so to speak, that would allow council to collect impact fees. So right now, there it's, there's nothing in here that would, related to actually the collection of impact fees. This is just the comprehensive plan amendments to allow that to occur. And the discussion of school impact fees will begin in January. So this is just the recommendation from the Planning Commission, is to make those changes. And if council agrees with those changes, then staff would prepare an ordinance and bring that back for your consideration on, on November 27th.
Are there any questions, comments? Councilmember Curtis?
So the extra money that's collected, would it show up on that tax pie chart, or this is a separate set of funds that citizens wouldn't necessarily see unless they're buying new property, or there's new development? Where, where would this impact fee be paid?
The, the impact fee would be collected, and this is what the school districts are recommending, for new multifamily development. Single fa, excuse me, single-family development.
The pie chart that you, was presented earlier was property tax.
So it's unrelated?
It's unrelated.
So this is unrelated to property tax, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought it was a different fund.
Councilmember Herbig?
I just want to say I support this. I think our, it's obvious our schools need the capital funds, and I hope we can move as quickly as possible. My understanding is they've forgotten a couple hundred thousand dollars from the rest of the district in this year, since they've implemented this in other parts, and we're lagging a little bit behind. I'd like to see us get this as quickly as possible for them, because they obviously need the support. So thank you for your work on this, and I look forward to doing this and the, and passing the impact fees, or hopefully early 2018.
So again, you don't want anything from us tonight? Is this coming back to us?
We're asking just to make sure that, that the recommendation, these amendments to the comprehensive plan, that you are giving us direction to move forward with preparing an ordinance.
Okay, can we do that just with a thumbs up, you think?
Yes. Okay.
Looks unanimous. Thank you. Last item is authorize the city manager to sign and execute an amendment, an amendment to the commercial site development permit and transportation mitigation agreement, TMA, extension and funding agreement for the Lake Point project. City Manager, Robert Kerlinzey.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. So the Lake Point project, which is about 45 acres on Lake Washington, near the mouth of the Sammamish River, it has a commercial site development permit that has been in place since the early 2000s. And the city has been extending that, the expiration date on that permit several times over the last couple of decades, including at its December 29, 2016 meeting, where the city council authorized the city manager to sign and execute an extension and funding agreement pertaining to the commercial site development permit. This agreement that this council approved on December 29, 2016, grants extensions to the CSDP, or Commercial Site Development Permit, expiration, under certain conditions and under certain milestones to be completed by the developer, and in this case, widener development. So what's, the good news here is that of the milestones for the first-year extension, all but Item 3D of the milestones have been completed by the developer. Item 3D is a general agreement requirement, where both the city and the developer are required to enter into an agreement that explains the parameters of the agreement and working relationship moving forward. That has not been completed yet, and we're proposing that the amend, that the, the extension agreement be amended, so that Item 3D, the general agreement, be delayed until April 30 of 2018. That modification is shown in the attached exhibit. It also discusses the need for a pro forma and what we're calling a funding gap analysis, that would be both for the developer side of the equation, as well as the city side. One thing to point out, and this is one of the milestones that was completed, is Section 3C of the CSDP extension agreement requires the developer to produce a site concept for Lake Point. Earlier this year, I think late August, if I remember correctly, the developer did provide a site concept in fulfillment of that particular milestone. I want to point out a couple things about that concept, and it is attached to your packet item tonight. The city did not participate in producing the site concept. The city has not fully reviewed or provided comments on the site concept, nor has the public been given an opportunity to review and provide input on the developer's site plan concept. The developer's public participation plan will provide for public review and input. And as things like the pro forma analysis and gap analysis are produced, and as studies and further site investigation are completed, and as the city and the public provide input, the site concept will likely further evolve. Also to remember and consider is the project's potential impact on neighboring businesses and properties, including seaplane operations next door. We acknowledge that the State Environmental Policy Act, or SEPA, will require the developer and the city to identify and analyze impacts of the project, particularly on uses of nearby land and operation of nearby businesses, such as Kenmore Air Harbor. We also acknowledge that other laws and regulations may require widener in the city to identify and analyze similar other project impacts. Further studies, design, and analysis will be needed to identify and address these impacts. And so like I said, as the first exhibit to your agenda bill, you have the amendment to the CSDP extension agreement, and it delays the general agreement deadline to April 30 of 2018, and adds language about needing a pro forma and funding gap analysis. Any questions?
Councilmember Smith?
Yes, can, other than the SEPA process, could you tell me where would, and I guess if we did, if there were a development agreement that were to occur too, but can you tell me where the public's participation points are in this process?
Yeah, even prior to, so the SEPA process would officially start with the submission of a permit, and that'd be the official former, formal SEPA process. Prior to that, the developer has a public participation plan, where they would reach out to the public and get input even prior to submitting a permit, and even prior to starting the SEPA process.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Is there any action you request from us tonight on this?
Yes, if you could approve the proposed amendment to the CSDP extension agreement.
Do we need a motion to do that?
Yes, please.
Okay. Is there a motion to extend the agreement?
To approve the amendment.
To approve the amendment to the agreement.
I make a motion to approve the amendment to the agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
That's been moved and seconded, that we authorize the city manager to sign and execute an amendment to the CSDP and TMA extension and funding agreement, number 16-C1627, for the Lake Point project, similar to and substantial to the form attached in Exhibit A. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Passed.
Thank you. Okay. Next item is staff report. Of course, council manager, city manager?
Well, I was, it was really nice seeing Officer Gary Zornes get recognized tonight. That 37 years, more than half of it spent in Kenmore. It's just, it's just amazing how much public service can be completed, and all that he has done to improve quality of life, improve safety, and change lives in that 37 years, you can't even begin to describe what's gone on in those years. So just, I just want to thank him publicly for his, for his public service. On a lighter note, if you look right out here, we've got another utility box that's been decorated. The one right in front of City Hall, it has a outer space theme, and the slogan is "Dream Big." That's all I have.
Councilmember Smith?
Nothing to add, thanks.
Councilmember Danuski?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Sperry?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Dr. Curtis?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Herbig?
Nothing to add.
Okay. I also would like to thank the chief and the whole Kenmore police force for the, the relationship they have with our citizens. And a lot of it starts with our children in the school system, and officers like, like Officer Zorn. And we've had several other school resource officers over the years that have made a major positive impact on our kids. And you hear all these, these things in the national news about the conflicts with police and, and the youth, and gosh, they're making great strides to keep that from happening here in the city of Kenmore. So I really appreciate that. And Officer Zorn and all the other officers on our force, past and present, have done an admirable job at that, I think. I want to apologize for my brain freeze. All I could think of was the Lord's Prayer. Okay, so I had to turn it over to the mayor, but please excuse me. Okay, if there are no more comments, you can one more comment.
Nancy Owsley reminded me of something. They're looking at having the Mary's Place grand opening November 28, 29, or 30. They're looking at those three dates.
All three, or one of the three?
One of the three. So if any one of those three dates don't work, can you let us know as soon as possible? No? Sure. Okay.
Thank you. If there's nothing else to come before the council, meeting's adjourned.